Four thirty, work session, May 30th. We have a number of items to go over today to get ready for the council meeting for next week. The first three on the list are items that will be taken care of at the council meeting. The first item to talk about this evening is consideration of sale of property locally known as 1114 Linden Street, City of Burlington with conditions. And I'm assuming Eric's going to tell us about this?
This is a property we acquired through the Bannon Building Program. Has since been demolished, although the garage at this location was in good condition and we did have interest from the neighbor prior to demolition. He has submitted a bid. So the conditions would be the purchaser either needs combined lot with the adjacent lot under their ownership that has an existing house, since we do not allow garage in the separate lot, or construct a new house within 180 days of purchase. So again, we do have a purchase or a bid from an adjacent neighbor that would fulfill that, but would be open to anyone else interested in meeting those as well.
So basically, we're set up for an auction then on?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? You okay, bud?
Any interest? We have the bid from the neighbor, but no other interest in someone wanting to build a new house there as of yet, so.
Okay. Next is a public hearing consideration of urban renewal competitive bid process and intention to accept proposal for sale of development and development of city property. Go ahead. Back to Eric.
See if I can fill in some of the blanks. This is the Apollo property, looking to enter into development agreement for the sale of the property, for redevelopment of it, the property into residential units. A couple of provisions of the development agreement include statement the developer has requested tax abatement assistance in support of the project. We talked about extending the abatement that-
For the downtown area that includes that?
That expires in a couple of years.
And we'd have to extend it to, I think that we were talking with him about 2023, to extend it through about that timeframe, so we'd have time to do that in stages.
Couple of the other conditions in here, the acquisition cost is $100,000. Developer proposes approximately 40 high-end residential units with potential to include commercial as well. Some of the requests through the city would be deeding over any land or necessary, having any land from the developer deeded over necessary to install a cul-de-sac or turn around off a University Avenue. Would be rezoning the property to a PUD to allow potential mixed use in the property, including commercial. And there's also the College Drive behind the property is currently a city right-of-way pursuing vacation of that as well, so.
We also agreed to install lighting up, what's that, University?
University, yeah.
And he asked us to make our effort, best efforts to try to be more aggressive in nuisance enforcement in that area as well.
It's needed.
It's needed. This is a process where competitive offers can come in. I think we asked that those be done through Thursday.
Yeah.
So there could be potentially other offers for consideration, but that's the main proposal that you'll have before you for next Monday night.
Just refresh my memory, it seems like a long time since I've been here, since I wasn't at the last meeting, but we approved the extension of the downtown area up through that?
We'll have to do that. Part of the agreement with him would be agreeing to pursue steps to make that happen. Given that this is a, this is one proposal before you, potentially you could have other proposals come in, you haven't approved this one yet. It's not until you go through this sale process that it would make sense to extend that.
Okay.
And that's something that doesn't have to be done prior to the sale, that can be done during the course of the year.
All right, that was my question. My position has not changed on that building, so I won't be voting in favor of this.
Again, we had the two different proposals that had come in through the process. Well, we had several as time has gone on, but when it came to redevelopment for housing, this was the only one that was a market rate, truly market rate proposal.
Correct.
Not seeking funding from some other tax credit source or some other source comparable to that. And that seemed to be the flavor of what the council wanted to see moving forward.
I think you read that right. Okay. Anything else? Ready to move on? Okay. Public hearing consideration proposal to enter into sewer revenue loan disbursement agreement, the principal amount not to exceed $308,956.67.
This amount, 308,000, is an SRF loan, zero percent interest, for planning and design of the Locust Basin of the MSL sewer basin. We had previously borrowed money from previous work and had some money on hand to pay for the contract with HR Green. This is the amount that you see before you is the remainder to fulfill that contract.
Anything else?
These, the million that we previewed, or so, that we had previously on an SRF planning and design loan along with this one would be wrapped up then in whatever construction-
Correct.
-project, the first construction phase of the MSL that moves forward. It bears zero percent interest until the time that we enter a contract on the construction phase.
Correct.
And then what happens?
Then you start, it starts, we end up paying on a semi-annual basis, I think it's two percent interest on it.
It's fairly low.
It doesn't go into principal payment repayment until after the project is complete.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nick. Motion for preliminary adoption, the second reading of amendment ordinance number 3403 and ordinance creating the Arbor View Estates PUD.
This was the request to amend the previously approved PUD to allow two additional single-family attached structures or condo structures, changing some of the setbacks, and then having the cul-de-sac at the north end of the property with a surety, either letter of credit or other bond, that it would continue to the north property should that property develop, and then increasing the size of the detention pond on the south end of the property from what was previously shown. At the previous meeting, you did discuss the request to waive sidewalks, that was not recommendation by staff and it was not recommended for approval by the planning commission, but in your packet, if that was something the council wanted to consider, there was some proposed language that could be considered, being sidewalks shall be required to be installed on the interior streets of this subdivision, except as follows, sidewalks shall not be required along lots 20 through 25 of the subdivision, which would be the north, four lots on the entry drive, and then the two lots on the west side of the cul-de-sac. Part of the reason staff didn't recommend approval of that is our site design standards and our subdivision code specifically state sidewalks shall be on both sides of the street for all new streets and subdivisions. It is something that gets requested a lot, would probably be something we'd recommend looking at. Seems waiver can, based on request or based on the development, it is in our code that is, should be on both sides if we want to consider waiving a lot of these, and maybe we need to look at our code a little differently or examine that, but it's up to council if they want to waive it, and it's this instance.
Think I know what you're thinking, but go ahead.
I know previous councils have made that mistake, and waived. We've got kids that are walking in streets to school because sidewalks were waived or not required as the, as development occurred. Black Hawk School is probably the most prominent over the years. They, there were, sidewalks were not put in, there was actually ditches, so they couldn't even, they couldn't even walk in the, in the right-of-way, they had to walk in the street to get to school. It took years and years and years to finally get the sidewalks put in. Then we have developments start to occur off of cliff, and, and all of a sudden, we've got a new middle school that's built, we have to go get a grant, sidewalks don't get put in for two or three years after the school's open. Again, kids are required to walk in the streets. We never know where it's going to occur. I think those that made the decision years ago and created the ordinance requiring sidewalks on both sides of the street are, had some wisdom behind what they were thinking because they seen the past and seen what, what had happened in neighborhoods that didn't have sidewalks. Second, and probably more important, and I know I was not in favor of the complete streets, but this is the, one of the smallest segments of the complete streets recommendations within our ordinance, that if the council has really set on complete streets, that we shouldn't be waiving parts of the development. And we're not talking a, really a huge amount of money here, it's, it's part of the development cost. And there's the potential of an extension at some point, and we don't know where that extension's going to go, or how that is going to develop out.
I agree with this idea of not waiving all the time, you know, either don't or change the ordinance. You're one example, and it's a good one, but I've also seen a lot of kids walking in the streets with sidewalks on both sides. I mean, West Avenue is a good example, all the time. And then I see some of the housing developments where we had to put in sidewalks on both sides, like where I live with the seniors, still, so many people like to walk in the street. It doesn't seem to be a problem there because it's low traffic area, you know? And that's what Scott Zeiser is saying, this is not going to be a busy, large complex. And so again, I'm in favor of changing the ordinance, but I agree with you, we can't just be waiving these things. Either we change the ordinance or we abide by it. End of my speech at this time.
And I'm one of those people, when we walk, we walk in the streets. I mean, because a lot of places you go, the sidewalk, it's hard to walk on, really, honestly. And I'm in one of those blocks that doesn't have sidewalks on both sides.
I know.
But I'm not in favor of this amendment. I think there should be sidewalks. So that's where I, that's where I stand. But we'll see what happens on, on Monday. Any other thoughts?
Not at this time, but might come later.
Please.
So we're not going to even consider that amendment at this point?
If someone offers it, I think we should consider it, but I don't know if somebody, I don't know how the other two people feel. I don't know. I think we should leave it there, someone wanted to think about it anyway.
It's not, it's only a recommendation at this point.
Right, someone would have to make the motion.
Introduce it.
Someone would have to introduce it. Okay?
Agree.
Okay, next item. Motion for preliminary adoption, the second reading of ordinance rezoning the property locally known as 816 Valley, from M1 Light Industrial to C3 Central Business District. Downtown mixed use.
No changes from previous readings, again, request by the current property owner to rezone to C3 to allow residential development to the property, under the current zoning of M1 Light Industrial, residential use is not allowed. C3 is to the north and east of the property bounded by, it is in the downtown mixed use area on our future land use map, so rezoning was recommended by the planning commission four to zero.
Okay. Do we have any problems with this? Do a waiver on?
I don't have a problem with the rezoning.
Are we okay?
No, happy to see something happen with that building.
I hope it does, yeah. Have to remind Jim that we want to think about waiving this one. Okay, motion preliminary adoption, the second reading of ordinance amending section 137.08 of chapter 137 sidewalk regulations of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
The code change strikes out the current 50-inch minimum and replaces it with 48-inch minimum, and adds the language that the public works director has the discretion to match existing in areas that is not currently up to code. For instance, we have some areas that have some 36-inch sidewalk, and should they ever want to replace one panel, it would allow me to approve that 36-inch sidewalk replacement.
That is wise. Why was it made 50 inches to start with?
Because there was a developer that built a sidewalk that was 47 and 3/4 inches, it was laid out 48 inches, but it come out 47 and 3/4, and they were going to make him tear it out because of ADA requirements. So I suggested that we just make it 50 inches and then be assured of it being at least 48.
Yeah.
And that didn't really work either, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, I just wanted some background. Jim, the-
So let's go back to 48.
The previous number eight, we're going to move to waive the reading. How about this one, you want to move to waive that one too? Waive the second reading?
Yes.
Okay with that?
Yes.
Move to waive number nine also, Jim. All right, here comes the exciting part here. Resolution awarding contract for the 2017 flood wall mitigation phase five.
With the river coming up, could you start quickly?
This is Leo.
This is Leo Foley with V and K. We did get five bids, five very good bids, quality, every one of these were quality contractors. We would like to have any one of these build the, build the project. SG Construction gave us, V and K had not worked with them before, so we asked them for references, they gave us references, we checked on three of them. We got some of the best references that I've got in 25 years of doing this from their references. One was Southeast Community School, Southeast Community College, and the other was Wine Guard Companies, that gave us just unbelievably good, and both of them had long-term relationships with SG. So then I called SG and talked to the owner about the project itself, and he seemed to know a lot about the project. He understood the 18,000 linear feet of H pile, he's going to use Black Hawk Foundations out of the Quad Cities, that's who V and K had worked with when we put the design together on that. He's going to do his own underground concrete, and that's a significant part of the project, that's 66,000 cubic feet of concrete.
Wow.
And then he's going to use Four Seasons, who I'm not familiar with, but he says they're a local firm, to do demolition and excavation. He's using MJ Daily for paving and B C Z for staking, so he's got a lot of local people involved, he seems to really have his arms around the project, and I think it, I highly recommend going forward with SG.
Okay, great.
He said the one concern he had was the river.
Yeah.
River coming up, and just have to play it, play it as best we can.
So is there a certain height the river has to be before we can start, or does it-
I'd like the river to be a couple of, two or three feet below the top of the wall and decreasing, and we should get that. I really do think in the next month, that river will start going down. I'm not here to, I'm not here to make great predictions, but if history is anything about it, July and August are usually pretty good months for that.
Your weather prognostication hat.
I know.
Something about, I thought I heard you say something about never, but I don't-
I won't use that. Could I, any, any questions?
That's good, I'm, I'm looking forward to this.
Begin right after steamboat days, yes.
I know you and Charlie and Eric and Jim have put a lot of work in on this, so this is good.
So how much under the preliminary estimate was this?
Oh, I'm sorry, the estimates range from 6.2 to 7.6 million. V and K's estimate after plans and specs, when we were done with it, was 6.7 million. So we're half a million below what the plans and specs-
What was our preliminary number when we went through?
Our preliminary number with contingencies, I think, was 5.2 million.
That was including the engineering or before engineering?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not perfect, I'm not, I'm not positive.
We are significantly over what our preliminary, when we submitted numbers for the state, and as we've kind of talked about before, how will we address that moving forward?
Yes, we've got, we've got three or four more phases to come. Lift stake, pump stations, stormwater pump stations are a big cost, somewhere about four or five million dollars in stormwater pump stations. We believe we can reduce the price at least another million dollars with those stormwater pump stations. We, we're looking at different types of pumps to use, we're looking at, and one we're doing right now, we're doing for Davenport, we're doing a, a structure that has a, a big, it's a, it's like a flap gate inside of the structure that won't allow the water to come back through. We think we can really reduce the size of the pump station, use a different type of pump, maybe not put them in as fancy buildings, even set them outside with enclosures around. Correville, Iowa City has both done that recently, so that's how we're planning on trying to save another million dollars. And our whole goal is to stay within the 26.2 million dollars that we first, so this is the first phase, this phase has the most unknowns because of that, the wall, the river wall and all that.
Yeah, I can believe that.
The other part of this, we borrowed money this spring for this project, we did not, we borrowed a little over five million for the first phase, I think, so. As, and we knew we were going to be, end up over that with the construction, so our plan had been talking with Travis Squires, as we go into next year's bonding in the spring, we'll likely see a portion bonded to cover this, any shortfall we have on this first phase of the project at that time, still being repaid out of the same stream. We just hit a cap, 10 million borrowing in a cycle, we can borrow annually and still keep that tax exempt status for selling it. But we do have a plan for covering that part.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, council? You okay, bud? Thank you, Leo. Okay, resolution awarding, awarding contract for the 2017 Seal Coat Streets Program.
This is Bob Wright, City Engineering Manager. Seal Coat Street Reconstruction, not quite as glamorous as a flood wall, but we got two bids back.
Just as important, however.
Yes, just as important, yeah. So for the nine streets, we had identified on the southern, mostly southern part of Burlington, W L Miller Company, who did the contract last year, came in at low bid over OMG Midwest or Sesford. So we are recommending to award to W L Miller Company, using the, the higher price, using pea gravel instead of the crushed limestone. As far as a fiscal 17 budget, we're coming in about 96,000 under budget, so as we get going, and we'll look at if there's additional streets in that area to do that.
Although the budget amount includes engineering costs as well.
That's correct, so I'll tally that.
You're only actually about 30 to 40,000 under.
Tell me about limestone versus pea gravel.
You know, and, you know, it's, how do you say that? So with the pea gravel, you get, you get a larger uniform, I want to say embedment, whereas the crushed limestone, you get a little more dust.
Okay.
So I don't really know how to describe the main difference there.
Quite a bit more dust, actually.
Yeah.
Compared to what we had before.
Right, right, it's quite drastic, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I like the pea gravel idea myself, so, yeah, thank you, Bob.
Me too.
Okay, resolution approving final plan of the Lau subdivision. Who's doing this one?
This is, this is a one-lot subdivision off of Osborne Street, down west of Central Avenue, just splitting off an existing building in this area, kind of an older building, this kind of shows a little better representation. Just splitting off this existing building from the remaining buildings on the lot. Just a minor subdivision that comes straight to council.
What, tell me what-
The blue outline shows the-
Is it what, what business is it, this is?
No, I don't even know the business name offhand.
Lightabirds, I bet.
That's who owns it, yeah, yep.
Lightabirds?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Anything else? You all right with that?
Yep.
Consent agenda, resolution to enter an agreement with Impact 7G Inc. related to U.S. Environmental Protection Agency grant award for Brownfield's area-wide planning grant. Eric?
This is part of the Brownfield area-wide planning grant that we received from the EPA for $200,000 to do some studies in the downtown area. A couple of components of the project is an existing conditions and market study, assess the existing structures and infrastructure, market analysis, research, community involvement and visioning, site reuse plans, using data and information from the existing conditions analysis, market analysis, and community involvement to determine best use for proposed sites in the downtown, and then ultimately developing a Brownfield area-wide plan that will focus on compiling all the research, data collection, community input, and create strategies, policies, and programs to implement recommendations in a formal planning document. So ultimately, this document will create a vision for the overall redevelopment of downtown Burlington in the target area, which is the SMID, that's in line with the sustainable communities living principles. So it's kind of a holistic view of the downtown, especially targeting the Brownfield sites underutilized sites and what some reuse potentials are for those sites and how to kind of build up our downtown area.
That sounded grandiose.
But this is, I think, a two-year project with $200,000 from the EPA. We have selected Impact 7G, they're working with Confluence and Leland Consulting for the project.
Questions? You okay, bud?
Yeah.
All right. Resolution approving agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Hamilton Walters Marine Corps League Detachments 616 for use of Memorial Auditorium.
So this agreement is just an extension of the one they currently have right now, they had a three-year agreement, is expiring, so we made a few changes, had the attorney look at it, so we had some legalese added there, but it was reviewed by the Marines and they're fine with it, so we haven't had any problems.
Okay.
So any questions?
I don't have any questions.
No questions for me.
Good, thank you. Resolution of support for YJ Development for parking.
This is in regards to a project that Jesse Caston has brought forward. You want to just give a description of what they're wanting to, or looking to do and what they're trying to get for cooperation from the city?
Yes, Jesse Caston Terrace Real Estate. So this is one we've talked about for the Blah and Sons Building, which is a former Hope Haven, people know as the Hope Haven Building. Churchill Drug, Mr. Moto's Building, locally known. So both buildings under contract currently by Y and J Properties out of the Quad Cities, and to do market rate units, total of about 125 units between the two buildings. And, you know, as they've looked at the market, one of the items, and what they always run into with all their developments is trying to figure out parking. So, you know, originally, we had talked to Burlington Northern, they just last week denied a sale of that property, but they did say that they were open to possibly looking at leasing options, so we're talking to them about that portion, because we still think that that's probably the best location to add parking, not just for this, but for downtown, proximity to downtown. We've looked at some other lots around there, that 56 existing spaces to be expanded, along Valley Street there, adding diagonal parking along Valley Street. So what they're looking for, and I actually sent them the resolution today to take a look at, to see if they're willing, it's pretty broad in here, but they're looking at some type of participation or something from the city saying that we're going to help, you know, figure out the, the parking situation. I haven't gotten back from them on how specific they want to be on that, but that's kind of an overall view of the project. There is plans to have commercial on the, on the first floor, so they would like, you know, as many stalls around there, because as downtown develops, you know, in general. of an overall view of the project. There is plans to have commercial on the, on the first floor, so they would like, you know, as many stalls around there because as downtown develops, you know, in general. I think that we're running into more and more issues with the parking, so.
Yeah.
Just looking for some kind of, I think, support, you know, that the city's going to look at different options for the parking. Like I said, the Valley Street is something that can be done. Jim probably has the figures on it, but it's adding the lines to it and probably reconfiguring a little bit there. But we would need to look at additional on what can be done. We're still going to try to work very hard on the Burlington Northern land, see if there's a longer-term lease that maybe could be worked out there. I was unfortunate about the sale that got denied. We didn't get any comment back on why, but operations was the one that kicked it out of being told, so.
Okay.
I think that as you have some discussions with them to find out if what's acceptable to them, knowing what is going to be needed in the resolution for them to feel comfortable moving forward would be pretty important. I'm gone the rest of this week, too. If you wanted to get with Nick on wording, if you need specifics, the things that I could think of that they are going to ask for specifics that I could, could see having as for included in the agreement is to develop on-street parking on Valley to commit towards this project, leasing the spots in a lot west of the fire department, pursuing the lease and development of the BNSF land. And the fourth is the biggest one from a council perspective, hi Annie, I didn't see you come in, would be developing the second, like a second story of the lot south of the US Bank Building. If they're needing to get all those specifics to be part of this agreement, that's, that's a, it'd be nice if it was just what's in the resol, in the resolution that's presented to the council because it says that they're going to work to try to get these things done, but it doesn't commit them to any dollar figure, which the council can always love, and I like to have, I like to see, too. The first three of those are very, I, I have a, a pretty good comfort level suggesting that those are okay, even with the lease of the BNSF land, the cost to develop that at a $500,000 level and what you're going to see for the, even though you have the potential for the railroad to take back that lease, the likelihood is, would be fairly minimal.
Right.
And your lease payments over the course of a decade are going to cover the costs that you've, you've put into that project. And there's, it's such a big win for the downtown area.
Exactly.
The, the one that I wonder where you're, you fit as a group still is if you're being asked to develop a, a second story on that other, other lot. And yet, it's, if you end up doing that, you have some potential benefits for a significant portion of the downtown area that there, there is good solid justification to do, it's just, it's a bigger commitment from you. And that's something that you'll just have to work with them to find out what they want to see, if they need language in there that, that specifically states that on it or not.
Yeah, and I think, so that's a pretty good justification. What we tried to do from the start of this is try to look at, okay, here's what we've identified as best-case scenarios that may be the most feasible, and then worst-case of, and I, like I said, I hate to use the worst-case because it's not, it's not a bad case. I mean, we're talking about development downtown, which is great. But as far as a financial impact, you know, I try to make sure that we're looking at everything ahead of time. Like I mentioned before, this is probably 18-month process before it would have to be delivered, but they do need, they need to see some kind of commitment before, you know, before they pursue, obviously, the development, so.
And in regards to even the, that last, the piece of putting a second story on it, in speaking with, I know this isn't the magic formula for everything, but at least show some community support from the, from a portion of the community that, one portion of the community that has been traditionally against TIF for projects like that. The Chamber, Jason has, has talked about a willingness to consider or put support behind this. I don't, we don't have any official letter from them or anything on it, but they see the value for this type of a project or, the bad part is, is that I've really been out of the loop here the last week.
Well, understandable.
But they see the value for this being, using TIF financing, and there is a flexibility within TIF. If you do end up moving forward and down that route, you have the ability to do a project like this.
How many, if we want to head with that, how many places are you talking for parking?
A second story, I think, on that is in the, I want to say in the 70s stall range, although I'm kind of guessing, we haven't even put a footprint on there to see.
It's significant, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, one last comment, and I, I've mentioned this before, is I think that this, you know, this was kind of a project-driven. I think it's an issue that's kind of needed to be addressed, but this kind of moved it forward for not only these developments, but, you know, other development downtown.
That's a good point.
This is, yeah, this has been something that has been talked about here at the council level for the last few years about potentially needing to have another parking level at some point in the future. But we've all, we've continued to push it off that until you have the demand created, there, there isn't a justification to sink that much money into it. Well, you're getting to the point where you have a demand created.
Which might tie into one of our discussion items there with the downtown parking update.
Yep.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. We have a number of public hearings set for June 19th. Consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 126 Taxi Cabin Vehicles For Hire. Consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 127 Vehicles For Hire. Consideration of ordinance vacating and selling a portion of Denmark Street right away, located west of South Main. And consideration of ordinance vacating and selling a portion of the alley right away, located north of it and east of South Main. Consideration and sale, of sale of property locally known as 1336 Garnet Street. And consideration of ordinance amending Section 170.5, Board of Adjustment, Chapter 170 zoning code of City of Burlington. Those are all public hearings set for June 19th, and they'll come up later in our next work session. Stephanie, are you doing treasurer's report? Okay, treasurer's report.
Yep, and that's on vacation. So in your packet is the April 30th treasurer's report. April's always a good month. It shows the general fund in a positive balance again because we get all the property tax revenue, so. Other than that, things are coming in as expected. I know we just got the updated local option sales tax for this fiscal year, and it's the 4.2 million, which is exactly what we have budgeted, so.
Oh, good.
That was good news. Other than that, I mean, you'll see, we still have a couple of funds that have the deficit balances. Those will be cleared up with some transfers at the end of the year, which I'd, I'll do the second half transfers in the month of June. So, any questions?
So if it, it says here, general fund balance of 763,201. Is that, is that correct? Is that what I'm looking, looking at?
Yes, yeah.
Is that the number we're trying to get to with the 15%? Or how do we, how do we know if we ever get there?
No, we're sitting, year-end was, we're at 2.5 coming into the year, and we'll end up at about 2.6 would be my guess by, by the time all is said and done. One of the big things that has not happened yet, the second half of the year transfers between funds. We do significant transfers between funds twice a year, and that number will occur in June, and then we get all the different true-ups that occur through the accrual process at the end of the year. And we'll, if we are to get to that 15%, based off of our expenditures now, would be more in the 2.8 to 2.9 million. So we're still two to, I think, 200,000 to 300,000 behind, is kind of a ballpark guess.
You're gaining on it.
But we're, we're still gaining on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so once I make the transfers at the end of June 30th, and we look at the first preliminary year-end, you'll see that, that amount be closer up to that, but it won't be final until we do all the accruals and all the expenses from June are in, and all the receipts are in in July that apply to June. So that takes about 60 days to say, okay, we're final. Then the audit will happen and they could find something, but at the, at June 30th, that number will hopefully go, be closer to the 2.5 million at that point, once we do transfers.
All right. That's what I was interested, I wanted to know when the benchmark happens.
Yeah, it's, it's still a couple months away.
Okay.
I know on the revenues and expenditures, too, looking at them through April, like I said, I don't think anything is looking out of, out of sync. I mean, debt service is high because we had that refunding bond, but since we did the budget amendment in May, and my May reports will increase the budget amount so they look what we've increased, so.
Good.
Good.
Thank you, Stephanie. Discussion item two, fireworks ordinance, ordinance. And we have a draft document here that looks pretty simple, right?
Yeah, good evening. I'm going to kind of cover the use and kind of where we're at, and then try to figure out maybe where we're going to go. Fire chief is going to kind of try to cover the sale portion of this, and maybe some regulations we want to talk about there. But off and on throughout the week, I've been in contact with Patrick, the city attorney, and, you know, explaining to him that currently our ordinance bans the use of fireworks in the City of Burlington. You can't do that. And so as I read the code, you know, it kept referencing to 727, which is the code that's been changed at the state. And so then that was my question, well, if we're referencing the code, are really fireworks a use of, still going to be unlawful in the City of Burlington? His statement to me was, yes, absolutely. And so he drew up a draft of, as a stopgap measure that we could put in place to, until we really figure out what the council wants to do and, and how you want to go and what direction you want to go. But, I mean, currently, it's going to be so confusing for people that at the state level, the sale and the use is fine, but at the city level, there, the sale is one thing, but the use is something completely different. And so we just need to make that real clear, at least for now, because June 1st is coming up, that the use of fireworks inside the city limits of Burlington is unlawful and is punishable as a simple misdemeanor. I mean, that's something that I really wanted to say and, and make sure we're clear on that. But with that said, I mean, now is a great opportunity, too, for us to maybe modernize or update our ordinance, because there are cities that are doing, it's all across the board. I mean, several cities are like we are currently, they're going to ban the use of it. Some cities are just accepting the state law, and it is what it is. And then other cities are amending portions of that. In other words, they're setting timeframes as to when you can use fireworks, and they're setting like age limit restrictions, and you can't do it if you're intoxicated. Some cities have gone to the point that you can't use or possess fireworks on public property inside of a city. Well, now that takes it to a whole new level if you can't even possess them. So, and I have those examples printed out, and I know the chief has some, and the city manager sent you some, but it's kind of, where do we want to go, or where does the council really want to go with this? You know, and I need some, some feedback, and maybe it's going to take time for, for me and you and all of us to get emails to kind of see what's the consensus of the community? What's the community want to do with this? Because a huge problem for us is going to be fireworks equate to shots fired, and we can't, as a department, make that decision until we get there. So we're going, a lot of these calls that are going to be fireworks are going to turn into shots fired calls, and that's everybody on deck, no different than a major fire. We're going to send everybody we got as quick as we can. We don't have any choice. We have to do that. And so you can kind of see where it creates us a dilemma. And, and are people going to do it? Yes. I mean, we already know that, people do it every year. But if they're legalized, there's a huge percentage of the population that would maybe do it that wouldn't otherwise. Because there's still a lot and lots and lots and lots of law-abiding citizens out there, and if that's the law, we're not doing it, period. So, I mean, that's kind of, kind of what we got to weigh out and what we have to discuss. I just wanted to, to make sure you understood, and when I talked to Jim, I wanted to get this put out there, is, is that currently, I'm going to repeat myself, but it is unlawful in the City of Burlington to use fireworks. You can possess them, but you can't use them. So, I mean, I'm going to need a little feedback as we go along here as to, do you want to stick with that? A lot of communities have. Nope, you can't do it. Or do we want to, yeah, you can do it, but let's really limit the timeframe. Whatever, July 1st to July 4th, or, you know, some have boiled it clear down to July 4th, between noon and 11:00 PM, and New Year's Eve with no same-hour restrictions. So it's all across the board, there's a whole gamut of things, and we can, we can kind of put this together as we see fit. But I just, I wanted to put that out there, at least for the use, that you can't, you currently cannot use them in the city. But there is a, a great opportunity. If, if the community wants us to discuss this further, if you want to discuss it further, this is an opportunity to do that.
But we cannot ban the sale.
Correct.
We can't override the state law on that, can we?
Correct, but it can be restricted, and our chief can talk about that.
I was going to say, who, how does a business qualify legally to sell fireworks?
Yes, so the first thing they got to do is get a permit through the state. And currently, that's, it's not even set up. I just got an email from the state fire marshal. He's hoping on the first to have the portal open up. It's all going to be web-based where they have to create an account, apply for the application. It's like eight, it's an eight-step process. Well, about step six, they have to have an inspection done by the, either the state's going to do the inspection, or they're asking local jurisdictions to do the inspections. We've already signed up for our fire marshal to do the inspection. So he'll have to go out, do an inspection, upload his inspection to the state. They're also providing some training, some, some updates, some kind of guidance on how to do those inspections. Once those are uploaded, that person will turn his, their insurance, have to provide insurance and all that. Once they get approval, get a permit from the state, then it'll vary by jurisdiction because just, not just everywhere that you can put up a fireworks stand, there can be some local rules. Here, what I know so far is they'll have to get a peddler's permit. Anybody that's opening up a business will have to get a peddler's permit. And I'm not sure, I think in our permit, it says that takes up to two weeks. I don't think that's the normal process, but they'll have to apply for that. So that's how they would get the approval to start selling fireworks. So on June 1st, you and I can see anybody selling fireworks. There's no way they're going to have a permit on June 1st, and that's only for the permanent structures. The tents, which I think most people are not going to go through the process to, to put, to sell fireworks out of a brick and mortar building, they're going to do it out of a temporary structure. A tent, a roadside trailer, you know, a little stand of some kind, it'd be a lot easier to get permitted for that. Those, those, those can't start until June 13th. So I think there'll be time for them to get the permit from the state, come here, get a peddler's permit, and then start selling on June 13th, so. To answer your question, that was a long version of how you get the permit.
I've read some of the other cities ordinances, and it sounds like there's quite a bit of detail or demand as to how you go in that business legally. I mean, it's...
Right. And the state referenced the NFPA Code 1124, which we don't have as a city code, but that's the standard that they'll be inspected by.
And even with that, some of the, with what's in your base ordinance that you see in here with the insurance coverages that are required?
Yeah.
There's some flexibility in that, too. I've seen different communities have done different amounts. In fact, I think what I forwarded to you had some different amounts.
Like five million dollars, one of my, that's...
Right. And one thing I did notice, a lot of people, they're rewriting their city code, and we haven't done that, but they're adding in, say, fees for inspections, and not saying fees are super important, but this is one that we've never done them, so we don't have any kind of way to recoup our time in doing the inspections, which, whatever, we would update this, we would probably want to put our fees in there, or mention a fee, which is probably somewhere else in the code, but. And I would hope we would maybe mirror, try to, I know that's going to be hard in our community, not be too different than West Burlington. But I know they're, I'm not sure where they're going to end up with theirs, if they're going to make any changes to it.
Patrick is, is who developed theirs, too, so.
Yeah.
If you wanted to mirror theirs, it's the same city attorney.
If I read those right, you can't, within 100 feet, 150 feet of a residence, how, where are you ever going to shoot off a fire?
Yeah. Be very limited.
Yeah.
But we have so little time to work on this. Adopting something similar to or the same as West Burlington might be prudent short-term, but maybe that's not a long-term solution either. I don't know.
I would support leaving them, leaving the ordinance as is and just making them illegal to use. I wouldn't have a problem with putting together an ordinance that makes possession illegal. We've just, we've got a history of very bad decisions by people that... We've just, we've got a history of very bad decisions by people that use these things, and we're just darn fortunate that we haven't had a major catastrophe. I think the decision by the state was wrong, and I think if we can, if we can counter that, we should.
I mean, that's, there definitely cities taking that approach, there's no question about that.
There are a couple of things that you need to, or should get done regardless. One would be to modify our code to get to the correct code sections being referenced within it, with the new law.
Yeah, I don't know if that got forwarded to you, that version that Patrick worked on, just kinda as a stopgap, talks about that?
It's in the package.
Okay, alright, I didn't look through the package. Yeah, that, he felt that that was important, at least getting to that level to begin with, and then seeing where it ends up. Wouldn't make the possession under this, would not make the possession unlawful, but it is a place to start.
A second thing that I think you would like to see on the regulation side, if I'm listening to what you said, is modifying our code to match West Burlington's, just so you have some consistency in the area? Or you said that, but...
On the sales.
On the sales side.
I definitely think we need something about the inspection fees, and we've gotta do something with that.
Within this process, you do have the ability, and I tried to mention that within the email I sent you, a lot of the limitations that we have for speed of getting something done are self-imposed limitations, and if you want to get it accomplished quicker, you can. You have to have a unified voice in that, wanting to do that, but you certainly do have the ability to do it faster. The process of doing, setting a public hearing to consider a change to an ordinance is something that is not a requirement on this, not a state requirement. The only reason we do that is because you have a set of procedures that you've adopted for your day-to-day operations that requires that. So we, if you wanted to waive that in this instance, because of what you're trying to get done with the timing of this, you could avoid one reading just from that. You typically, this council has had a practice, and it's written within that same rules of procedures, you'll waive the second reading, you don't waive the first reading. You could have a decision here based on how fast this has happened on you to waive the first and second reading, and adopt it the same night it's introduced. You may not have that level of comfort to do something like that, but you do have the flexibility, if you wanna do it, to proceed with that.
I'm really hesitant to do that.
I understand.
To do what?
To waive those readings.
To waive everything.
But you can get rid of that public hearing to avoid at least one of the readings.
I think that's one, one of the things that I noticed when I came on council, is how slowly things tend to move.
There's a reason.
And there's a reason for that, and it's a good reason. So, when you go on things that you don't think through all the way through, sometimes you end up in a problem.
Legally, how do we handle these fireworks displays that we've had in the city?
Well, there's a permitting process for that. I mean, they can actually go through City Hall and get a permit, and then those insurance requirements kick in again, but there's something already in place for that.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody was having an event, and they wanted to have fireworks, they can get that done. I mean, if it meets the parameters to do that.
Even though the ordinance reads no fireworks?
Well, oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's that way currently. I mean, you can still get a permit to do that, if you meet this criteria.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any reason to change that, do you think?
No.
No.
No, I mean, our fireworks displays are so limited, I mean, and they've, the ones that we have are very traditional, you know, they're safe, and they've gone on for years, and the fire department's extremely familiar with it, you know, and how the process works.
I'm thinking of the B's Ballpark, and Golf Club, and some of those.
Yep, pre-planned events.
So they can continue?
Yes.
If we do nothing, I mean?
Yes.
Hmm.
Yes.
That's interesting.
I don't have a problem kind of expediting this process to meet our current ordinance, making them illegal. I think that illegality is, I think that's probably what we should do. I don't think we need to change, to meet, you know, people can use them June 1st through July 8th. I don't think that's a good idea. If they wanna go over to West Burlington, I guess they can, but I think it should stay the same as it is right now, as far as you cannot shoot fireworks off.
What Patrick submitted was to essentially do that?
Yep.
Just to modify to get to where we have the right code sections.
Yeah, and it redefines then what class one fireworks, class two. It really makes it modern under the current new language the state put out. But with the restriction, you still can't use them in the city limits. Exactly. And then we'd have to add a section, obviously, for the sale or whatever the fire chief wants to do with that.
So, do we need then this ordinance here on our agenda for next Monday?
If you're wanting to move forward on it, you would, would you be okay if it was the way that he had had it drafted for this cycle, and if we need to adjust it in the future?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
You are?
Yeah.
Are you okay with?
Yes.
I hear, seems to me you're saying, yes, let's do this.
Would you be willing to have it on for a first reading of an ordinance for this next week, which goes against what your rules of procedure are, but there isn't a state, the state doesn't require you to do it, have the public hearing?
I think the state's forced our hand.
True.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ah, we're good, thank you, chiefs. Convention and Tourism Bureau update, Chelsea.
Hello, Chelsea Toll, Executive Director, Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau. For my contract with Hotel Motel Tax, this is just one of my bi-yearly updates to give you guys, to let you know where we're at with the CVB so far in 2017. So just to recap on the impact of travel in 2015, remember, our economic impact numbers are a year behind. We get these every fall from the state Iowa Economic Development Authority. We were just shy of $133 million in expenditures, but tourism in Des Moines County does support over 1,000 jobs and raises just about $9 million between state and local taxes. We do continue to sit ranked Des Moines County 13th out of all 99 Iowa counties, so we continue to stay up there in those top levels. In 2016, the CVB had a direct hand in bringing about 57,000 visitors to the area, and we know these visitors stay about 1.6 days. Most of these visitors, we say we have a direct hand in, it's because it's, the event might be receiving community event funding dollars from us, which is our grant program that we have through the CVB to help bring visitors from an 80-mile radius outside of the county. And these visitors had about 4,000 hotel room nights, which contributes to about an $8.5 million estimated economic impact. So we just know that they're bringing dollars to our communities, staying in the hotels, shopping, dining, doing everything that we want them to do. Based on the ads that we placed in print or digital locations, in 2016, we sent over 2,500 guides out, and that was to all 50 states, plus Canada and Puerto Rico, so, and that leads into about 14,400 visitors at the Welcome Center from all 50 states and 33 different countries. So we are hitting that national and international audience up, right here in small, little town Burlington, so. And then our digital community guide gets a high number of views as well, just, we know that's important, we live in a digital age, we have to be able to reach those visitors that way as well. Looking at hotel motel occupancy, I know there's a lot on this graph, but I kinda wanted you to be able to compare pre-Iowa fertilizer, which is red, clear on the left, and 2017 so far is the blue. You'll notice that occupancy is dropping. It's obvious, all those construction employees have moved outside of the community. Right now, we are pretty even right now with 2013 numbers, but we also had a more-than-normal, highly-fast increase in 15 and 16 as well. And then looking at RevPAR, which is revenue per room, again, 2013 is the red, and 2017 is the blue. Revenue has stayed high, so that means, or higher than 2013, it has dropped compared to 15 and 16. So that means hotel motel tax is continuing to grow, and we are still collecting those dollars. A lot of that is, we do have to thank the hotels, you know, with new ownership in five of our properties, that means there's brand-new, they are completely brand-new hotels, they've been able to raise their rates just a little bit, and then Quality Inn is just dropping up a remodel as well, and Super 8 American have new ownership, so they'll be starting remodels here soon, too. So very soon, we'll have complete, brand-new hotels, which will be nice and encourage visitors to keep coming back. So, you know, kind of hinting at, numbers are dropping a little bit, so what is the CVB doing to bring those numbers back up? Because we don't like to see those numbers on the downside. First thing we did in January is our remodel at the Port of Burlington Welcome Center, you know, that is a city building, so thank you for allowing us the opportunity to move forward with that remodel. I love our brand-new space, fresh, modern, new. It's very inviting to visitors, and I wanna tell you publicly as well, this project couldn't have been done without your staff at the Public Works Department. I've told Nick this a couple of different times, they're phenomenal. They helped us move everything out to get ready for construction, and then specifically, Dave and Mark down there on the team have helped us put everything back, put things together. You know, that team is just fantastic, so we can't do it without them. If you haven't seen it yet, stop down and see it, we have that new look. It's our goal to keep the display cases updated on a regular basis, bring new groups in, and just continue to show that off to the community as a welcoming place. And as you know, we are the cover of the state's travel guide this year in 2017. There were over 11,000 votes, it was a public vote for us to win that, and it just shows that there is a lot of community support here for tourism and Snake Alley, and just showing us off to the entire state. And because we are on the cover, we're able to expose ourselves to other Midwestern states that we don't normally get to, expose ourselves to due to our lower marketing budget, so hopefully we'll see some new visitors come because of that as well. And as you know, Fireball Run, I keep talking about it, it keeps coming up, but this is a new commercial that we just produced, so Eric, if you wanna click on that for me, we'll play that real quick. Maybe? Oh. That's all right. As you know, Fireball Run is the 26-episode Amazon streaming series that'll be here in September. We've done two site visits so far with the executive producers, and we'll have one more in July. I think it's seven mission sites that we have selected, so attractions within the community that the teams will get to go experience, and get, and experience, I guess, under-discovered America while they're right here in Greater Burlington. At the end of it, we'll have two to three episodes that we're showcased in, and we'll get to own that footage, and continue to show ourselves off to the whole world. I think my favorite part about it is that the contestants aren't just your average people off the street, they're, you know, 120 economic developers that'll be right here in our community, experiencing our hospitality, and the chance for Mayor McCambell and Chad Palmer to, you know, Team Burlington to interact with them the whole time, and then continue to invite them to come back, and, you know, think about us for their next economic development opportunity is just huge. I just kinda wanted to remind you a few reasons on why Fireball Run selected us. They'd noticed that we had a rich history, vibrant downtown, and numerous attractions that just hits right into what their audience is interested in, so we'll get that audience attraction out of it as well. They noticed that we had an energetic, compassionate, and progressive economic development. Economic development has been booming for us lately, and so the more we can continue to show that off and grow it, the better we are. And they saw that we had a progressive economy, which appeals to industry leaders. So just kudos to all of us that work for continuing to grow Greater Burlington and make things better for all of us right here.
You said there's seven attractions, is that what you said?
Yes.
And all the teams have to go to each one?
No, not every team goes to every mission.
I see.
They kinda look at their personalities and what they're interested in, and some of it's completely random, and I can't tell you what those mission sites are, because we don't wanna spoil the fun.
No, I don't want you to, but, okay.
Yes, so they'll be all over the community before ending in downtown, for the final celebration downtown. And then most recently, this greater, the Convention and Visitors Bureau has set up a Greater Burlington Destination Fee. So what this is, is seven area hotels have volunteered, or volunteered to add a 1.65% per room per night on the guest hotel bill. These dollars are expected to raise about $150,000, and it's all going to support the construction of the brand-new indoor sports complex that the Imagine Campaign is working on. And the CVB is really excited about that, because we're gonna, we already know how fantastic the outdoor Recplex is in the summer months, and we can't wait to duplicate that in the typically lower season off months, which will continue to raise those occupancy numbers and those revenue numbers, so looking forward to that. And that's what we've been working on, what questions can I answer for you?
I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, and see you later.
Keep up the good work. Thanks, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Next, we have Steve Freiber with HPC Updates.
Hello, and I'm speaking as the Chair of the City's Historic Preservation Commission tonight. Just a very brief update on our 2016 activities, since May is National Historic Preservation Month, and you guys passed that resolution a few weeks ago. I wanna give a shout-out to our, my fellow commissioners, Mark Fisher, Hal Morton, Barb Nelson-Botts, David Road, Judy Stevenson, Kay Weiss, and Charlie, who's our staff person, does a great job, it's a pleasure to work with him. The Preservation Commission met five times in 2016, I'm glad to say, we had a quorum at every meeting. We had no local historic designations last year, and I don't think we had any new properties asked to the National Register either. There were four alterations to National Register properties in our city. Two of them, or one of them was a National Register property, but not a local designation, so the Preservation Commission didn't have any direct say in what went on there, but that's the Tama Project. The three locally designated buildings that saw some work done were the Depot, of course, with interior and exterior rehab, 622 Court Street, that house got a new roof, and 615 Court had a window removal, so the Preservation Commission did certificates of appropriateness for those final three projects. We did meet the required train to maintain our certified local government status. That means we are put in line for grant possibilities to do some preservation-related work, and I'm glad to say that we were successful in getting a CLG grant through the state last year, and the amount, let's see, it was $14,950. That was to do design guidelines for the Heritage Hill Historic District. Something's very much needed, it will give us some guidance as a commission going forward when it comes to making decisions on COAs. We wanna have something in place that gives us some guidance as to how those decisions are being made. The only other thing I need to add about 2016 was, we always try to do some kind of public events, some kind of public outreach, near or during Preservation Month. And last year, we just missed it, it was on June 5th last year, we did the insider's tour of City Hall, and that was very well-received. We are proud and pleased to serve the city as your Preservation Commissioner, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any. You okay?
Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Downtown parking update. Oh, we get to hear from Charlie? Alright.
This is the second downtown parking update I think that I've done. As brief background, the council accepted the downtown parking plan, and advised city staff to meet on a regular basis with DPI, downtown stakeholders, and city planning commissioners to bring forward parking improvement solutions. After that, the city staff formed the downtown parking committee, made up of those individuals, to bring forward these solutions. to bring forward these solutions. The parking study was completed with a public input, survey, stakeholder outreach, interviews task force. It was a big undertaking by Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. They did a nice job on that. They evaluated existing conditions and compared it to other communities, and then suggested improvement options. So the Downtown Parking Committee, as I said earlier, and as authorized by the council, is made up of local city officials, downtown partner staff, planning commission, and then downtown stakeholders. Our goals are to identify parking issues and items that may be addressed to improve the parking situation and perception downtown, and then bring forward recommendations from the adopted plan to the council for consideration and implementation. And I have our first set of recommendations that I'm bringing forward to you tonight to get your feedback on them. We've been working on these for a few month, months. Hopefully you like them and don't have any big changes, but I'll get into those in a little bit here. So the, the parking study gives a few different goals. There's immediate goals, or near-term, intermediate, long-term, and then specific place-based. We started focusing right away on the near-term goals, and we chose to focus on signage and parking lot programming. The parking study identified that signage was a pretty big deficit in downtown Burlington. We have small signs, the signs are not easy to decipher, and not, and as a result, many people are not aware of where public parking is located. I think this graph does a great job of illustrating that. The blue line is the, the ramp, and you can see that all of the on-street parking around the ramp is used pretty heavily, but the public parking in the ramp is not used at all. And when you look at the signage for the ramp, it's, it's clear that it's not, it's not well-signed, and people just aren't aware of the existing parking there. Another issue that was identified was the usage of the lots. This is a map of, of downtown Burlington at night. Hardly any of the lots are used at night. It's all either zero percent occupancy or, or under twenty-five percent occupancy. So people who are parking in downtown Burlington are not staying there overnight. We have a lease structure where you lease for twenty-four hours at a time, so most people are paying for twenty-four hours but only using eight or nine hours. We wanted to get a little bit more of a fine-grained look at how people are using parking lots, so we surveyed all of the users of the Fourth and Valley parking lot. This lot is a hundred percent leased. What we found out is ninety-four percent of these lease payers do not use their spot at night, and eighty-nine percent of the lease payers would be interested in reducing the number of hours they lease, such as a seven-thirty A M. to a five P M. lease. So what we are recommending is adding better parking lot signage, which if you remember, you approved twenty-five thousand dollars for parking lot signs, which we're grateful for. And that, better identification and use of existing city parking lots goes along with Solutions one-point-one-five and one-point-one in the parking lot study, as well as adding wayfinding signs to point people to parking lots to increase awareness of lots. Those would be the, the universal parking Ps with the arrows that you see in other cities that point towards parking lots and help identify them. And then the other thing we're recommending is changing parking lot programming, creating half-day leases and mixed-use lots. So people would be able to lease just during the workday or twenty-four hours, and these type of leases would be able to exist in the same lots. You would have mixed-use lots. And another component of that is changing lease prices. You'd be creating a new lease structure, so lease prices would need to change to fit that as well.
So are you suggesting then that someone could lease during the day and a different person lease at night?
I'll get into that. What we're actually suggesting is that we make a lease from seven-thirty to five, but then after five, it's just free like it is right now. So if they wanted to park there, they could just leave their car in that spot, and they wouldn't have to move it. So this is the, the parking lot sign design we've come up with, and we've got quotes for these, and we think that we can get all the signs we need from Iowa President Industries. There'd be a P. on the top, then the name of the lot below it. This is Sixth and Washington. There's also have been some calls to call it the Snake Alley Lot, because it's right below Snake Alley. But in general, we think the lot should be named by the street intersections they're, they're on. And then it would have all of the information for the different spots. Free parking Monday through Friday, five P. M. to seven A. M. and on weekends. Public pay spaces, these would be hourly, and then these would be the two reserved spaces of blue, or it doesn't have to be blue, but some color calling out half-day leases and then a color for full-day leases. Right now, every spot in each parking lot is numbered, and this is because the spots are self-enforced. We don't have the staff to go around and enforce these spots. If somebody's parking in your spot, you call the towing company and they tow them away. So we need to have the spots be numbered, so you can call and say, there's somebody in my spot, it's spot number four. So what we've come up with is we keep the numbers, and then below the number, we also have a smaller sign denoting what type of space it is. So this allows us to change the, the use of the lot without changing all of the signs. For instance, if you were in spot two and you reserved from seven-thirty to five and you wanted to reserve for twenty-four hours, we would just swap out the, the lower sign without having to change the entire sign or the numbering scheme for the lot.
Oh.
And these are the locations identified in the parking study for parking lot signs. There's sixteen or seventeen of them. They're on all of the public parking lots. Not all of the lots would be mixed-use. The riverfront lots, the lot behind Lindo, Mexico, and then the lot on Seventh and Valley by the old sickles would remain free parking with a forty-eight-hour limit. So the sign there would just say, free parking, forty-eight hours. But every other lot would have a sign that looks like this, even if they're mostly reserved spaces. And that's just to keep the, keep the consistency of the parking lot signage downtown. This is showing where the directional P. signs for parking would be placed. Every yellow dot here is a directional P. The red and the green are for wayfinding signage that has multiple things on it, such as pointing to Snake Alley or pointing to the auditorium. Those who don't have money for this year, but there is money set aside for next year, which if that is kept, we could get those signs at that point. So for parking lot programming, we were trying to determine what would be a good lease price for a half-day lease. So we surveyed other cities that are similar size to us to see what their lease structures are like. What we found out was that of comparable cities, Burlington's parking lease rate is the lowest, and most cities don't even offer twenty-four-hour leases. Therefore, based on that information, the advisory committee recommends the following rate changes. For the half-day lease, it would remain at twenty-seven fifty, which is the current twenty-four-hour rate. The twenty-four-hour rate would be bumped up to thirty-two fifty, and then increased by two fifty each year until reaching four, forty dollars. So this is a chart of what the twenty-four-hour lease would look like. At two thousand twenty, it would reach that forty dollars and then cease increasing. This would bring us in line with other cities leasing prices. It would increase the current price of the twenty-four-hour leasing, and we thought that it would be stepped up gradually, so as not to be such a, a big price shock to people who already lease twenty-four hours. In the future, we're going to look at educating downtown workers regarding locations of, of free, long-term parking options. One of the complaints we get is that people who work downtown are parking in the spots of the people who shop downtown, and that, that's causing issues with finding parking, available parking. We're also going to improve public awareness and marketing efforts of parking availability and enforcement. We're working on a website right now for downtown parking, and then evaluating parking needs and programming based on potential new housing and commercial developments. We're discussing the potential residential development, and we, we're looking at adding more parking as, as new development comes in. And then bike parking's also another big thing. We're trying to get more bike racks installed in downtown Burlington. Do you have any questions or comments on the, the recommended lease structure or the recommended parking lot sign design? So if there's no comments, we're just going to go ahead with this, which we think is good, but we want to make sure you think it's good too.
I don't see anything wrong with it myself. It's obvious we need signs, there's no question about that.
I always thought it was interesting that the on-street parking right in front of the businesses is free, and then parking lots, you pay. We have some of those.
Yep.
I feel like the more desirable spots would be on, on the street, and those probably, I don't know. I feel like that's how it is at other cities, but...
We used to have on-street meters too, if we're taken out.
I remember. But this is good too.
I, I think the concept works fine if, if we're going to keep paid parking and, paid parking lots. I'm kind of like my neighbor here, not real fond of charging for parking, except in the case of reserving spots.
And I should mention that we're almost to the point where the, the money brought in from our leases can pay for the maintenance of the parking lot. So that's an important part of keeping these fees here, is that we can self-fund our parking lot maintenance.
We haven't been able to do that. Five years ago, this fund had a, a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar deficit in it, and we've had to work off that deficit to get to a point where we actually have the funds to start to afford to do some things as we move forward. But we just got to where we're at, at a zero balance, so we still need to be able to build up some revenue in them too. Takes a long time to adjust to where you got things happening the way they should.
Do we have any concept of how faithful people are to self on these hourly parking lots? I imagine that's hard to figure out, isn't it?
Yeah, Matt, people, parking there and not paying, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I, I don't think we do have any idea of that. We have the person who, who works the parking meter maid, but she's part-time, and...
Yeah.
That's a tough one.
We talked about an improved system, didn't we? Talking about budgets and that.
I think one of the things that they, you were looking at the idea of using a parking pay system?
We did look at electronic ticketing too, and electronic reservations for parking spots. We did get some estimates for what it would cost to do that. It would be a pretty significant upgrade.
That's why, okay.
We thought we'd fix the signage first and the programming to see what that does for downtown parking before bringing that forward.
Yeah, that's right. I remember. Okay. Good? You think he's...
Good report.
You think they're onto something here?
Yeah, I like this.
All right. Sounds like you're, oh, Charlie.
I, I think that this is something that if, if can, if we can move forward with this and get enough buy-in, has the ability to assist with a lot of the complications that are being created with the, with parking, with the amount of development that's occurred in the downtown area.
It's a big deal. Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Great, good report.
Next up, vehicle maintenance.
Trying to hurry and get Ron out of here, because it's his birthday today.
It's what?
It's Ron's birthday today.
Oh.
Evidently, he's turning thirty years old today.
Well, happy birthday then.
So this presentation will be very similar to the property maintenance. Talk about staff, budget, types of vehicles, the funding, and then private comparisons. The Vehicle Maintenance Department, I don't have the bottom person in there, that's a different part-time person now, but it consists of three full-time people and one part-time. This is a change from where we were, not necessarily in the number, but in the structure that we had before. We used to have a parts clerk, then we moved to a vehicle maintenance manager that takes more, takes care of the operation more. It used, vehicle maintenance used to be something underneath operations. As you see here, it's a, it's a budget in and of itself, it's an internal service fund. This is the budget. It is an increase this year, it's cut off, I guess. Bad job on my part. The, there's an increase in salaries, but however, you can see from a couple of years ago, there's a fairly significant decrease in the budgeted amount for commodities, which is diesel and gasoline, and funding. So, so how does vehicle maintenance get their money? So we bill out the part-time and full-time staff to the departments that are using the services. So police, fire, parks, streets and sewers, they all get billed out based on the work that is getting done, and these are the hourly rates that they get billed. The ninety-five dollars an hour is an increase from previous amount, I think it was at seventy-five. Oops. There is a markup on parts for fifteen, at fifteen percent, no different than a private company. And then all the fuel that is used, ten percent of, or ten cents of every gallon goes to few, fund the vehicle maintenance department. So what kind of vehicles we take care of? We take care of everything from small equipment, light-duty trucks, cars, medium-duty trucks, heavy-duty trucks, which include the, the garbage trucks and the fire department's trucks, and even some of my bigger buses, and then construction equipment. So we have, we have backhoes, we have graders, payloaders, we have, we have a very, I don't know the number, Ron might have the number more than I would, but we, we take care of a variety of different kinds of equipment. So I'll let Ron get up here and talk a little bit about the private comparisons, because he is the one that did all this work, so I will get up here and talk for him.
Good afternoon. I called around, and coming out of the private sector, I know quite a few people out there in the, in the business. And so I called around and asked them a little bit about what kind of pricing I could come up with, and, and a lot of them, some of them thirty-eight ninety-five, and then plus four dollars an extra quart of oil on a six-quart oil change. One place, sixty-four ninety-five, plus six dollars for an extra quart. So on average, the, the amount of money that came up, our, our average maintenance for a P M. A. is what we call preventative maintenance, is forty-four dollars, and that's roughly three-quarters of an hour to an hour, and the oil and the filter, and we put in a injector cleaner to, to create everything to smooth it. So on average, our, our money that the departments are spending on that are right in the ballpark of what they could, you know, take out and do somewhere else. What's nice about that is if you take it out to somebody else, you might not get the same people working on the vehicle time in, time out. So when we do it, we've got the same people working on that vehicle. We look at it, we know where it's at, so we can suggest the things that is needed and not try to sell the parts that are not needed. So we kind of, kind of exceed in that part. The private comparison of, these are the heavier-duty trucks. I called around. The heavy-duty trucks are from ninety to eighty-five dollars an hour. Light-duty car and truck, and this is for doing actual work on the vehicle, not just doing the oil change, but this is doing service work of changing brakes and stuff like that. A hundred-and-ten dollars I got from one place, eighty-four dollars an hour, and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents an hour. Right now, we're chang, charging ninety-four dollars an hour, and that fluctuates a little bit depending on what the expenses are at the time of, and so it can actually lower our rate depending on expenses.
Oh, okay. You got anything else?
Well, it's just, you know, when we, Nick was saying about the vehicles, we got probably over four-hundred piece of equipment out there. And that's all the way from leaf blowers all the way to our trucks. We have that in-house parts department, basically. We buy at, at wholesale. So what's nice about that is we take our vehicles somewhere else and have that worked on. More than likely, we're going to get a charge probably, you know, double wholesale price in order to have that part fixed. So we're saving a lot of money in that respect of having our in-place parts room. I really don't have anything else. That's kind of how vehicle maintenance runs, and if you've got any questions, I'd sure be glad to answer.
I think we're okay.
All good.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
And I would say the difference in these prices here, and then these prices here, is the level of care that my vehicle maintenance staff is, is performing on our vehicles versus, especially something like an, an oil change. When we're doing an oil change, we will, we'll check, not that the other places don't, and I should clarify that, but we care more about our vehicles because they're ours, and we don't want to have to try and fix them, you know, in a week or two. So I would say that the level of care is a lot higher, caring for our own vehicles. One, one thing that I, since I'm directly in charge of it, I thought I'd bring up to kind of show the improvements that vehicle maintenance, and Ron specifically, have made in the last year, is, is in transit costs. And I know that there's one, you know, one year to another, there might be several different things that happen that don't happen in the things that happen that don't happen in the following year or the previous year. But I took the combination because there was a lot of my transit buses that were taken outside of vehicle maintenance and done by a private... We were on a fairly steep track to over $160,000, and as of year-to-date, we are at $88,000. So there's still three months left in the year, or the fiscal year, to bill out. But we are well below...
Oh, yes.
I think that's a significant indication as to the improvement and the good work that vehicle maintenance is doing. I can tell you, I've been told many kudos. It's a completely different environment back there than it was a year and a half, two years ago. So I don't have really anything else other than that. If there's anything specific that you'd like me to cover, maybe the changing in the billing rate that we've talked about.
We've done a lot of different things that have gone on with that. As you've expressed what you're doing in the department, two years ago, when we were doing billing, each month would be a different billing rate. We were truing up on a monthly basis. And when you consider we had some fairly senior staff in the department with vacation and sick leave that could get used, and you could end up with rates that would be, well, when someone brought in a piece of equipment, you didn't know what rate you were going to get. And it could, if you had a month where you had a lot of vacation that was being taken and you had to spread out the fixed costs over the services that was being performed, you'd have, you could see that rate spike from one month to the next. Getting Ron back in there and having a true vehicle maintenance manager who was running the department that way as opposed to a department that really had no fixed leadership in it really had a big impact on how that structure worked. Putting in place a price structure that matched what was going on in the private sector and trying to get to where we had a fixed cost that the departments could know what they were going to get made a dramatic impact. Some of the different, I think some of the departments could come forward and talk about what's happened with vehicle maintenance over the last couple of years for them, for usage. I don't know if they want to, to talk about, like, fire and police, to talk about how those departments would go. And I think it might be worthwhile to do that.
Yeah, thanks, Jim, for giving me the opportunity, because I did really want to come up here and say something about what's happened at vehicle maintenance, at least for our organization as a whole. I mean, first and foremost, if we call Ron and say, hey, we got a problem, it's priority number one. Police and fire, priority number one. Take it out there, you get it fixed, you get it back. I checked with Kristen, and to date, outside of vehicle maintenance, we spent $515 in vehicle repairs. And I can tell you, in the past, it's been in the thousands because we would take a vehicle out there. We can't do that. Basically, if it's not brakes and an oil change and a headlight, we can't do that. You have to source it out, source it out, source it out. That's 100% the opposite now. I mean, it's total kudos to vehicle maintenance and Ron and how that program has changed in the last year and a half. It's outstanding. I mean, it is an absolute necessity, at least from an emergency responder's perspective. When you call somebody and go, we got a problem, we need this taken care of, we need the vehicle, and he's calling back that afternoon going, you can come pick it up. I mean, that's, there's something to be said for that.
Yeah.
And so, and when I get my bills now, I can actually look through the bills and make sense of them. Because before, unfortunately, it was, it was all over the board. Oil changes from $43 to hundreds of dollars. So it's very consistent, the billing, the service. I just can't say enough positive things. And I've told Ron that personally and Nick, and we mean every word of it from a public safety perspective, so.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll just repeat everything that Doug just said, but a lot of the same things. If we want something worked on, it's in the shop, it's being fixed. We rarely use any outside vendors for repairs, and we have some really good, you know, places here in town, repair shops to get stuff fixed, and they probably don't appreciate Ron as much as we do. Because we take, there are very few things, other than some warranty work that we've had to have done, that, you know, it's free to take it to the Ford dealership, so we'll take it to the Ford dealership. But outside of that, they fix our stuff, they fix it quick. Our costs are way down from where they used to be. I guess I can't say enough good things about vehicle maintenance, so we're really happy with our crew, so.
Thank you, Chief.
And I don't know how it fits for your two departments. I know as Nick was talking about transit, you would have buses that would go to different dealerships, and they would sit for a week or two waiting to be repaired?
Yep, and I think a lot of Ron could probably attest to it more than I could. And a lot of the problems that we've had last year, or, you know, the last year that I've been here and Ron, too, is cleanup work from work that maybe wasn't done so well in the past. You know, we've had a lot of electrical problems where it's been spliced together. And I don't know who did that, and I don't want to pretend like I'm pointing a finger, but it's just, it's finally being done the right way. And so you should see declining costs throughout the future. So...
Thank God.
That's all I have to say. It's a pretty good birthday present to be giving all those kudos, so. I'll answer any other questions, but...
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Sounds good.
This was, this presentation and a couple others are supposed to be intended to be part of the budget discussions. And I'm sorry to say, I did not realize that I put the point out now, I do, but it's really good to hear about, hear this and see how important this is.
Well, we had concerns about our vehicle maintenance program before. And even with that, having concerns, we needed to have, we have an awful lot of benefit to having at least a portion of our service be in-house, just because of some of the things that have been spoken of from the public safety perspective and being able to get vehicles prioritized and get them out. Being able to have a department that's really has good leadership on it and is getting that department running, I would have to say it's a lot more efficient than what it used to Provides us a level of comfort besides just the value of the ability to keep emergency services vehicles going on. We have a very cost-effective establishment down there, too, now. And I just don't know, when we've got department heads who are as satisfied as what I've been hearing over the last year versus what we heard from frustrations from the years previous, it's a major...
Big change.
Major change, and it's very positive.
Well, kudos to you and Nick, too, for being aggressive and stepping out and doing, getting Ron to come and work with us.
We're happy he's here.
Yeah. We are, too.
He looks pretty old for a 30-year-old, though. He hasn't aged well.
Right decision, right direction, right moves. And I would say I appreciate it, too. And like Jim mentioned, this is part of the budget discussions, and I'm thrilled to hear things like that, but I'm still concerned, but I just want to reiterate why we're talking about the budget, is we still have four police officers and a couple of firefighters that we don't have funded that have, that we've had requests for. And I want to see if there's anywhere within the budget that we can find a way to fund those positions. And if not, then some other miracle you could pull out of your hat that could make that happen. It's a, I know these, I think I know these two guys well enough, they wouldn't ask for that if they didn't really need it.
Okay.
Which is kind of where your next item on here is, in terms of some of the other things that have been presented. One of the, going through the budget process, several different items came up. One of them was the possibility of eliminating the recycling program, which is why we had Hal Morton come and make a presentation on what it would cost to get out of that program if the council were to want to do that. I think that during that conversation, that it was somewhat probably going to be in the $2 million range that you'd have to do on a cash-out basis to try to come up with a way to eliminate a $400,000 annual cost for the recycling program that is paid for out of sanitation fees, not out of the general fund. But I understand you're looking at what is the overall impact to customers. But even with that, you would still be in the process of having to meet the state mandates on waste reduction and come up with your own now-waste management plan. It'd be pretty difficult to be cost-effective on doing, going down that road, but that is an avenue that the council wants to look down. We certainly can. We had the presentation with property maintenance four weeks ago, I think, or two weeks ago? Four? Five, because we had an off week. That was specifically around the idea of, is this a service to eliminate or not? When, and I don't know what, I don't think I was at that meeting that was presented, but, you know, some of the things that property maintenance does that are, besides the day-to-day upkeep of facilities, when we do, we've done energy efficiency upgrades through here after doing the Alliant energy audits. They're the ones who install all of those, or a good chunk of those upgrades, such as thermostats, changing out light bulbs, et cetera. They make, they are able to do a lot of the cleanup for, say, down at the port for events that occur. They do snow removal at different facilities where they have it within their schedule, along with, I think Parks does a little bit of that with some of the lots and sidewalks. They don't do all our property maintenance. They do a lot of the maintenance at the library, but we'll have a project such as the flooring was done downstairs in the kitchen area, that was outsourced. I think we had a, we might have had a quote from property maintenance on it, but where we have a project that doesn't fit within what they can do, we do get that outsourced and have someone else do it. Not always do, we do a cost comparison with the private sector. In its spots, we do. One of the big things that property maintenance does is keeping our, all our lights up to date throughout the community, the traffic signals, the streetlights that are our responsibility. And those are things that we would be a little bit more difficult to outsource, so if you really wanted to look at doing that, we certainly could. Part of our concern is whatever our staffing level is, is that we have to make sure that we keep them fully utilized. I don't know if, how well, if we have the right combination of folks down there, and I kind of like have to task Nick to make sure that we have that broken up correctly.
I know, time to time, the, some of the reason why they didn't do the basement or the kitchen downstairs is because their billing rate fluctuates similar to the way vehicle maintenance rate fluctuated. There's the possibility that we might be able to restructure that.
That's something that we want to work on as time goes on.
And the reason is that, Jim alluded to before, was vacation time, sick time, that accumulates and then gets added to the shop hours, end up causing higher billing rates for the other place that we bill out to. As far as the number of staff, I, Brayden and I have discussed the different areas that could potentially be farmed out. And the one that we think has the, one of the possibilities is mowing. We take care of the mowing around the Public Works Building. I think we do some other, but we do have a contractor that takes care of the medians in the highway that Eric hires. And I think, per hour, I think we probably could have it done cheaper by a contractor. But that being said, that person probably, there's other stuff that they could do. But that would be something that we'd have to analyze.
And as you mentioned, the rates there, that's something that I think Annette is in the process of working on now. Is that true?
Yes.
So we're looking at establishing more of an annual rate, and it'll probably take a couple of seasons to get to where we get that, the right figure on it. But I was thinking that she was looking in the $70 an hour range for their billing rate, which is fairly comparable to what a lot of...
Yeah, I wish it was $64.
$64. So it's, you're going to be able to get some services from a private contractor cheaper than that, but I haven't been able to hire a plumber at home for cheaper than that. So some of the things, it's, we do work out pretty comparable to the private sector. It's just making sure that we have the right, the right staff load there. I don't know if I have a lot more to say on that. And as we did try to talk about, like, with our, I think our utility bills have come up from folks a lot during the budget session. If I think about the emails that you all received, utilities was a big ticket item. Well, our electric bill is about $1 million annually. About a third of that is our streetlights, which Alliant mandates the rates at. About the only flexibility you have is to choose to, you have two different things you can do. You can either go to a less bright light, which has a lower per fixture cost at some locations, or you can look at having fewer lights. As an example, I think of City of Marshalltown, or remember back to the 1980s, the Iowa Trust scandal occurred? They were one of the, one of the primary losers on that scam. And they turned off either every third or two-thirds of streetlights in the community for a number of years to try to help make up for the lost funds that they had in that. So that's a third of what our electric usage is. A third of it is Don's facility, which went through, your plant went through a major upgrade that was completed back in 2012 timeframe. Alliant's come in since then to do an energy audit, and they found nothing to upgrade at this point. They see that in terms of energy efficiency as good as you're going to get for the time The other third in the different facilities, one of the things that we do, the library has gone through, I think you're on your second energy audit cycle since I've been here, and implementing the findings off of them. City Hall has, police department has, fire department has, Public Works Facility has over the course of the last four years have either had the audit completed and all the things from it done or are in process this budget cycle and next budget cycle to do, and will continue to do that as we can. For our heating bills, one of the things that we did, there's a, yeah, we have the ability to purchase from another entity other than Alliant Energy on our gas. We have three facilities that do that, where we do see savings. The problem is, is that you have, well, the nice thing is, is we don't have very many facilities that have a high enough gas usage to justify it. But we only have three facilities that, on a bulk purchase that way, that we have the ability to have cost savings over time. But we do take advantage of it, and we've had that looked at over time to see if there are other facilities that would benefit from it, but we're just not in a position where there are. But we try to do what we, what we can on that. Stephanie presented on something that the accounting department did to go through our purchasing process. We hired an outside consultant to look at the items that we purchased to see if she could find savings. She had the incentive built in that she was going to get a percentage of that the first year and a half, and I think identified about $120,000 worth of savings. Now, the thing, what you could ask, why don't we do that internally? Well, we don't have the time. We'd have to have someone additional hired who had the time to devote towards that. And if we did do that, they'd be in a position where they're not used to going and trying to work with vendors. This is someone who goes from community to community, and this is how they make their living, is finding things. And we can see the value, we're talking with Stephanie, she saw that as something maybe on a five-year rotation to have someone come in and look and see where we missed... missed something with either through, because I think some of the things that she looked at was work, and we look at group purchasing. Where can we make sure that we're just identifying the right source for an item at the best price? But as time goes on to do that again and have a review of it, we, we know that we won't find as much for savings, but we want to make sure that we get to it. I think that kind of covers the things that, the general topics that we had presented over the last couple of months to, that were in that vein. And I, what I know that we have that we wanted to hit on over the next month or two was the depot and auditorium come forward. I want to have, with the auditorium specifically, I'd like to be able to bring it back as an item, looking at how we're currently structured with, with Venue Works. Have a discussion of what you could do with either, what your options are for closure, or say, sale of that facility, or for operating it in-house, and what kind of different formats you could look at, what the costs of different things would be, and what the long-term benefits of the different options potentially could be. Other than that, I have to turn it back to you as, in terms of what you want to have brought forward to be discussed.
I hope long-term, thinking of Alliant, hopefully we can be looking towards solar energy. I don't know how soon we can do that, but it's something that we ought to be keying in on. I also would like to see us revisit the bus situation.
Very mad, I agree. I agree.
What was that last part about?
The transit, the bus thing, at least revisit that. You know, we had an option with syrup, and then it ought to be looked at again, I think.
You know, and that certainly can be. I know that Nick had talked with Southeast Iowa about this, and their recommend, based off of what their recommendation was, was more about your, just being, making sure that the routes that you have are cost-effective, your transit miles, and look at where, where you might be able to make adjustments to eliminate your worst performing sectors. More so than having a coordinated service. Although I'm, if you were to direct that, that get looked at, I, I would assume they'd be willing to do it, but that's not the recommendation that we got from them, just in some initial discussions, is that?
Correct.
So, I mean, we can bring it back up, it's just that's kind of the recommendation that they'd had from there, and, and that would mean that if you want to talk about it, our push would be to have you talk about where some of, what are some of the routes that may not be as cost-effective as others.
Yeah.
While you were talking about that, a couple of questions popped into my mind. Is the new police facility going to be more or less of the same energy?
Oh, in a couple realms, I mean, obviously we're going to update the heating, air conditioning systems, and then the whole building would go to LED lighting. We're in the process, we just got that from the design engineer, is sending it to Alliant, the way I understand this, that I had a gentleman contact me from Des Moines, who represented Alliant, I don't think he's an Alliant employee, I'm, it's like they contract this portion of it out. But anyway, got ahold of me, I signed up for their rebate program months and months ago, and so we're just to the point now where we could actually send them the whole interior design as far as, you know, outlets, lighting, all those things, and he'll go through that and audit that and put us in the best position one for future energy use, but just as importantly, any rebates that we'll be entitled to.
I see.
As we go along, like air conditioning units that meet a certain SEER, or whatever those requirements are, our engineers have those requirements, and now he's beginning to review those to see if we're in line for those rebates and future savings. But yeah, as a matter of fact, last week, that was a big topic of discussion, getting that information to that gentleman.
We're not to a point to be able to say whether operating a facility on a day-to-day basis, where it's going to be comparison with the existing. You're going to have a larger square footage.
But a less drafty.
Yeah.
You're going to have straight walls.
Yeah.
Right, vertical.
All the above, but that process is moving right along, I think we're about ninety percent there. I mean, we got all the dates set out, you're going to start to see some things coming forward to council for getting the bid packets together, and getting those bids out, getting them awarded. So yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's really ramped up here in the last month, so it's on target still to hit those dates that we set out originally, so.
Yeah, it looks like they're making really good progress out there.
Yeah, I think that target date will stay the same, I think their grand opening is going to be what it is, just because it's pre-scheduled.
Right.
I mean, so, but our timeline is, is on time. I mean, with what we originally said as far as, is our bid dates, our award dates, our construction dates, and substantial punchless dates, so, so far, so good, but I'll definitely keep you updated on that.
Okay, thanks. So the other question then was, Eric, how's our summer part-time? Do you have all the positions filled, or you still have vacancies, or?
We continue, we have vacancies throughout the summers, people either don't show up for work, or find something else, or I mean.
They come and go.
Yeah, yeah, but I, for the most part, we're pretty much full.
Okay.
It changes, it can change week to week, too.
Okay. Go ahead.
One caveat on that, the pool and summer camp haven't started, not completely full on those positions.
When is the pool open?
Uh, this Friday.
This Friday, okay. Okay, anything else, guys, questions, comments, anything else on this one, Jim?
Really, I think one of the, the, we need to continue to look at different ways to make sure that we're more efficient, and I, vehicle maintenance is one where we've done a tremendous job this last year, and we need to have that occur in other areas, too. I think that was a pretty glaring example of something that needed to happen. The long and short, though, is we're a community that has seen a shrinking population, our valuation growth is fairly limited. Email the, what Charlie had put together in terms of infill development, where he did a show of what's happened with, since nineteen eighty of our property valuations, and if you look at that, it's a declining increase. It is increasing, but it's a declining increase, and when you have a shrinking tax base, or a challenged tax base, it grows but not at the cost of inflation, not the cost of what's going on with salaries and benefits, and a shrinking population base, it is hard to maintain a level of service, let alone increase in certain areas without having eliminations in other areas. The long and short, you got to, I think that you got, if you're going to increase a level of service in some areas, if you're wanting to do it without increasing costs, you're going to have to eliminate some level of service somewhere else. You can find efficiencies and it'll help, and we're, we're trying to do that, but the real way to do it is for elimination of services somewhere.
Anything else? Moving on? What are we doing with TIF policy here, what is this?
This is really a follow-up from the last meeting.
Thank you, Ron.
And I think that, were you going to present the, kind of your thought, what you're, you guys have put together in terms of infill and how that should fit within, if you're still looking at doing a TIF policy, and I don't know if that's something that you, for one, as a council, this was kind of instigated from a, you had a proposal in front of you, which has kind of gone by the wayside.
Right, yeah.
And so I don't know if that changes the context of why, of what you're wanting to look at, or your level, level of incentive to want to look at it. And that may change how you proceed forward on this, but Eric can kind of go forward with what they were looking at. If you're going to have a TIF policy, what we see internally is making sense.
Charlie put together this memo, and you might be able to add in some details here as well, and have a map I can hand out, maybe put on the, over at here. You'd asked about a map of some infill sites, and this may not be the all, all the sites in Burlington here, kind of hard to see on here, I'll hand that out, but we talked a little bit about infill sites as one area the council had mentioned for looking at TIF and TIF use. Infill sites and going off some of what Charlie had was just areas that are not fully developed or undeveloped sites, where much of the infrastructure exists or is surrounding the sites. These are sites that the city is paying for, the cost of maintaining the infrastructure, but not receiving the support of revenue to associate with the cost of maintaining those revenues. So you're having subsidized cost for some of the surrounding infrastructure, based on the land values or property values, not supporting that total maintenance cost. So to increase property values would relieve the burden of these areas on the community as a whole. So you could target areas, or have a program that targets these areas to increase the property values through investment, which could have a significant return in areas where there is existing portions of infrastructure already in place. So you're already paying for the infrastructure in these areas, you're already maintaining them, but you're not getting the full value of that infrastructure, particular, particularly through these infill sites. Some sites, they are surrounded completely with infrastructure, some it's to the site. Some areas, there's issues with property ownership, multiple property owners own different parcels within the area that make it difficult to develop, but you also need to try and develop streets and infrastructure through multiple properties, so looking at infill sites for the use of TIF is supported through the memo that Charlie put together, based on having these areas pay for their cost. If you want to add anything, Charlie, or any details that you kind of put together, but I'll hand out this map as well, that kind of talked, looks at some of the sites that could be considered for this.
Do you have at least one extra copy of your memo? Just one?
Just one?
Well, you need it?
No.
As you're going through this budget process, you want to spend more money than kind of what we have, so you're kind of looking at things we can cut back on, you know. If you have too much infrastructure to maintain, or you have too many services that you want to provide, there's three ways you can cope with that, if I'll enter my memo. You can either cut services, which is kind of the conversation going on now, you can raise fees, which has been done in the past, or you can make the land you have right now more productive, which is the focus of infill development. To use a farming metaphor, since we're here in Iowa, if you're a farmer, you want to get as much productivity out of your land as possible, because you have a limited amount of land. We have the same here in the city. If you think about a street with, say, fifteen lots on it, and say, ten of those lots have houses on them, those ten lots are still paying for the infrastructure for all fifteen of those lots, and they're just paying a higher price because the land isn't being used as efficiently as it could. In Burlington here, we have about eighty-nine million dollars of infrastructure, and about a hundred and sixty-nine of just capitalized assets. With our total assessed value, infrastructure to total assessed value, it's a ratio of about one to nine. Another way to think of this is if you had a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, the, the cost to maintain the infrastructure for just your house, for the lifetime replacement would be twenty thousand dollars at a ratio of one to ten. Now, if we can increase the amount of private valuation in the city, we can increase that ratio of one to ten, to maybe say, one to eleven, one to twelve, then it becomes more efficient or easier to maintain infrastructure because our, our tax base is more. So really, what, what infill development is looking at doing is increasing the efficiency, efficiency of land that exists in the city of Burlington, getting more value out of it, so that it's easier to, to maintain the services and the infrastructure we already have existing here. I gave the TAMA building as an example, where six million dollars is being put into that, where we're only doing two-hundred thousand in upgrades to infrastructure outside the building, that's a ratio of thirty to one. So we're seeing a lot of private investment with a very small amount of public investment there. So we're, we're seeing a pretty big return on the amount of public money, and we're going to, that development is going to subsidize other services or other infrastructure in other parts of the city, just because it brings in so much money that's not used to maintain the infrastructure outside of that. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we should, we should be looking for infill development, if we do want to put TIF money towards it, to getting the most out of it that we can, so we want to look at high ratios of public to private investment.
What about annexation, is that in the cards at all?
I mean, it's, it's possible, if you consider the subdivision Deer Point Estates, that was an annexation. With that, we have to provide new streets and sewers, so that ratio is going to be a little bit lower. There's the possibility that they need a new lift station, too, which would be a significant investment. It really depends on the land, what land you annex, and then you got to look at private services and infrastructure provided, and what the, what the investment from the tax base would be.
Is there anything you'd like to annex that we should know about?
Yeah, well.
I think Tim's got a few ideas. No?
Charlie, well done.
Thank you.
I don't know where we go from here, council, what do you, what do you want to suggest or do here, if anything?
Go ahead.
I think Charlie did a, what he's put together here, if you do want to do a TIF policy for, for development, this is the kind of basis where you have an objective standard that, that makes financial sense to, to have as consideration for doing it. It may not be what you want to look at, but this, I'm really, was really impressed, and I told him that earlier today, with what he's put together, I, I'm surprised that you can do that well. No, he's, it's, this is a, this is a nice evaluation, and it, and it gives a good, clear understanding of how to put a framework around what would make sense for doing an investment in a project with TIF financing or other mechanisms. Again, you had something that was pushing you to take a look at this issue, and it's not there now, and I don't know what your relative taste is to even have this discussion as moving forward. And that's, that's certainly, that's a policy issue from your stand, from, from your standpoint, how do you want to proceed? Is this something that you want to say, we're, we're, we don't have a, we, we don't want to have a defined policy? We want to just not, our, our goal would be to prefer not to have TIF financing for housing occur? How do you want to proceed?
My preference is not to have TIF financing for, for residential development at this point. I, I still think that we've, we've got a fairly good residential development going on right now that doesn't need incentives. But what I do like is the, is the idea of infill development, and that if it's, if it takes more than marketing to get that done, then maybe we need to have a, a, a TIF program in place. But I'd, I'd rather see us, you know, market those areas if, if possible, or talk with property owners and talk to them about development, and the incentives that we already have available. Having said that, I think that the tax payment program that was put together in the downtown has probably had a pretty significant impact on what's happened in the downtown, and what's happening, and that's about to run its course. And I, I would like to see what, what follows, I'm sure we develop any more, any more incentives.
From my perspective, the, the TIF policy that we looked at as a sample from Fairfield, I didn't like that at all. I just, I'm not interested in having something like that, that's.
And it was less detailed than what some of the other towns were, that were beyond.
To me, it just went on and on and on, and the bottom line said, we don't have to abide by this if we don't want to.
Right, exactly.
Don't have to what?
Don't have to abide by this if we don't want to, you know, so.
Council had the full authority to ignore it.
No, I just, I don't see the point of that. I concur with what he said, though.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, after a lot of discussion and, you know, public input, I was ready to just be like, well, let's not deal with TIF and residential. But I, I do think it is very important, you know, developing these infill lots, just because we have it, and if we can increase the value, why wouldn't we want to do that?
I agree.
I just, so, I guess I would be for something strictly for infill. And if, if we were going to, if we could all be on the same page with that, I guess.
That's the bottom line, is we have to be on the same page.
If, if you're standing alone on that issue, which so far you are, what I would put it, what I would suggest is that's something that is revisited the next goal-setting session.
Yeah.
Which is about a year from, from now. But if you got more support to back you from the council, this is something that can move forward. forward at this time.
Are you talking to her?
I'm talking to all of you.
Oh.
Were you saying if it's needed or that you're supporting?
I'm supporting using TIF to incentivize the infill.
Okay.
But that is yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand that. The rest of us aren't, as far as like the way I'm reading it, so at this time.
This time, I I guess I don't see any.
I don't see any need to go any further right now.
I I guess I don't either.
What I'll point out from what I've heard from Eric and their department, you've had some some of the proposals that have come forward, uh, for some of these s- sites have been you've you've seen fairly narrow lot sizes, you've seen a lot of duplexes that are the lot splits. Um, and a a big reason why you're seeing that is trying to get it to where you get you can get a small enough footprint to get enough units in to make it cost-effective. If using TIF for infill would be trying to come up with a way to how how do you get that infill to occur that with without getting such tight developments occurring? And that's really kind of what you're going to see as being incentive if if you get to a point where you decide that it's worth doing. That's what you're going to be trying to accomplish.
Yeah.
With with what I've read in development, that's kind of the trend is to get more housing per block and increasing the values of those properties to the point where they're going to pay for them, pay for the infrastructure themselves.
That's been part of it, and yet we've had a couple of proposals that have done exactly that, that have been turned down from the council because of opposition from other neighbors about that density. So it's it's a hard balance to have.
Balance.
But I'm hearing what you're saying on that.
So I.
I'm also not hearing that you have a desire as a group, a a majority desire as a group to to pursue it at this point.
Right.
But I would keep it. If that's the case, I would make sure that it stays there as something that you continue to push as time goes on.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, markets change, the community dynamics change, and things can be much different a year from now and with a different council composition, too.
Well, I certainly hope so.
Well, sometimes all you have to do is show your ASP.
Show your what?
Sometimes your ASP.
ASP?
Your ASP. Other times, you have to use the stun gun, and that's just the different tools that you have when you're built. In his case, in development's case or in our case, we've got the.
Yeah.
Tax abatements and then we've got TIF.
Okay, are we are you settled then?
I guess so.
You don't have any direct nothing? Don't go forward, in other words.
That's what I'm hearing, so.
Right.
Yep, sounds good.
Not at this time.
All right, we have two appointments to the Flint Hills Golf Advisory Committee. We okay there?
I'm good, you finish.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, to finish up, back row, do you have anything to add? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention, I snuck up on a summer. Um, we are going to continue with the free rides, snuck up, um, free rides for, um, uh, school kids.
Oh, yeah.
On the bus. Uh, seemed to work out fairly well in the last couple of years, increasing the ridership. Um, I think it amounts to about a dollar a ride in what they generate, and having big groups helps efficientize that pro that process.
Is that something that is being coordinated again with the school and the library and some of the other entities?
I've I've discussed the free ride program with Rhonda and with the school. I'm not going to put out any publication. Uh, they do run a free lunch program and free breakfast program. Um, I was not going to put any brochures out with that, but I have talked to Rhonda about duplicating that information, um, with her connections and website and Facebook.
Okay.
We've we've used that through our summer camp and getting them to have that free lunch program. That's been a bonus for our summer camp as well at Perkins Park.
But I know in the past, we've advertised for yours day camp, but I talked to Brad, and you're already full, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Is that it?
Um, second thing.
Second thing.
Second thing.
Um, the river will crest as of Thursday, um, at eighteen foot as projector the projections show, um, and will stay in that level until at least Tuesday. Um, we have talked with steamboat days, um, and they know of the situation. The HESCOs around the lift station and by the auditorium will not be moving. Um, at that at that stage is when we would have be putting up HESCOs, so they're informed of the situation. I just wanted to let you know. I I know they've stayed up since February when the ice jam happened, but this is the exact reason why we have left them up. Um, we we've been kind of leery all of the month of May. It's kind of hoovered around fifteen feet. Um, and should the river levels drop, I know that there'll be anticipated conversation about removing them, um, for steamboat days. We start prep work typically the week. Um, so steamboat days is the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth. We will start next Tuesday in preparing the site for steamboat days. So unless there's a dramatic decrease in the next couple of days, they will stay up for the remainder of steamboat days. So I just wanted to let you know that that is my stance, and that's that's what we're prepared to do. Um, but I know that sometimes political powers can demand that those be taken down, but.
Stick to your guns.
But, um, my my fear is should it drop, we, you know, let's say we remove them or take them down. You can't take them all down without damaging or ruining a fairly good percentage of them. And should we have a flood or have, you know, a level that we need to protect, we wouldn't have any available to do that, so. That's all I got.
Stick to your guns. Eric, do you have anything? No? Councilman? Councilwoman?
Um, just, you know, all kinds of things happening this week. Of course, the farmers market on Thursday, and then, um, where are we at? Cinnapalooza's happening.
Oh, yeah.
With the, uh, the dachshund racing. Uh, that supports, you know, the Humane Society, so that's always good. Good fun time. And then we also have the, um, Community Basket.
I was going to say, that's Sunday, right?
Uh, I believe so. Yes. So, yep, that's it, too, the Bee's Stadium. And right after that, you can go on out to, you know, the municipal band concert. It's a teddy bear picnic, so that'll be fun. You just stay busy all day, and that's what I do. Um, and that's that's all I got. Just enjoy what we have to offer.
Amen. Okay. Mr. Scott?
I'm good.
Mr. Fleming?
I have no comment at this time.
About you, Mr. Frenel?
I haven't had time to think about anything, so.
Okay. Well, I have, and on a personal note, people have asked me if I'm going to be a candidate for reelection, and I've decided that I will not be. So I want to let you know, staff and council, that I will not be, uh, running for reelection. And if people ask me why, it's a simple, I strongly believe in, um, term limits, and if it were my up to me, every elected position across our nation would be on term limits. And so this is my self-imposed term limit. So, uh, you can join me in praying for God to raise up the person to come and take my place, a godly person, so. Thank you, and we're done.
Wow.